Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $150,528 for the payment of vocational educational tuitions and related transportation for students enrolled in vocational education programs other than an all-collective vocational school.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it, Mr. McQueeney?
Well, I don't want to be a wise guy, but I guess it is what it is.
Okay. Finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Seeing no one is asking a question, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of Article 7, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to Article 7, please raise your cards. I see several. I'm going to ask the cafeteria.
One.
Thank you. I declare Article 7 passed by majority vote. Article 8.
Article 8. Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $776,293 to cover the cost of tuition for special education students enrolled in out-of-district placements.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded by Mr. McQueeney.
No, this is not exactly is what it is, Article 8.
Okay.
It's an estimate of what it could cost. It actually cost us more than that this year. And in fact, whatever it does cost, we have to pay.
Okay. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak to it, or you've... I guess not. He's just standing there. Well, take a step forward to the microphone. I didn't know.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to just make a couple comments. One is, having seen the town struggle with budgets so with great difficulty in the past, it seems to me we have to be very careful to keep the level of emotion at some neutral tone so that information is provided tonight. The questions that have been asked have sought clarification and provided information, but I think it's important that we realize that these questions are for the entire town to make educated judgments as to how to vote. In addition, we have to be very careful that we don't get into the position of department to department, school against school, et cetera, because very soon the dialogue is going to start with regard to the override. Having said that, as we look forward to special needs, this is one of the things as our school, as our town changes in terms of the number of people coming into town, this is an area that has been problematic over and over and over again. While we don't have the luxury of having any contingency at this time, I just want everybody to be thinking as we go forward with the fact that this is something that we're going to have to deal with both now as we look at the budgets, but with more and more residents coming, and they will be coming, special needs are going to go up, and as it's already been said, that's something that we have to spend. So when we talk about all these level fundings and reductions, we've got to keep in mind that there are things that are unfunded mandates that the town's expected to do, and we've got to start pulling together and not have the divisions that are creeping into the dialogue.
Yes, sir. Dave Goodville of Baker Lane. I just wanted, for clarification, who has estimated the special education costs?
Who has estimated the education, the special ed costs?
Anne St. Pierre is the one.
I'm sorry, who's Anne St. Pierre?
The original. He's asking, he's asking about the original amount?
No, I'm asking about the motion on the floor for the appropriation to special education. Who made the estimate for that number that was just read?
Who came up with the 776 and change?
Right. Yeah, well, Rita and myself and Gary, the subcommittee that worked on the budget. We figured that it's underfunded because we had 60...
65,000.
65,000 that was left over in that fund this year, so we underfunded it by 65,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further questions, we'll move it to a majority vote. All in favor of Article 8, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to Article 8, please raise your cards. Please wave it vigorously. I do not see any. What's happening in the cafeteria?
One opposed.
Thank you. It passes my majority vote. Article 9.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Paul Malidi, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of funding the fiscal year 2011 recertification of values as mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Briefly, Mr. Malidi, this is to do what?
The Department of Revenue mandates that we recertify. This is the amount of money that's authorizing us to do so.
Is it, it's a portion, right?
Yes, it's a portion.
Okay. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. I see no one trucking down to the mic. We will move to a vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor of Article 9, raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to Article 9, please raise your cards. I see no cards. Cafeteria?
One.
Thank you. I declare it passed by majority vote. Article 10.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote that the sum of $114,500 is hereby appropriated to pay costs of capital improvements and equipment as follows. Equipment, technology, and licensing for the town network, $30,000. Sidearm mower for the Highway Department, $15,000. One new police cruiser, $29,000. One copier for the School Department, $7,500. Technology enhancement, School Department, $7,000. Three voting machines for the town clerk, $26,000, for a total of $114,500. And that, to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectman is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, 9 of the General Laws or amount set forth, or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. The amount set forth above for each capital improvement or item of equipment are approximate in nature, and so long as sufficient funds are available to accomplish each capital improvement or acquire each item of equipment shown above, the selectman may allocate amounts among the... I don't know what that word is.
Various.
Various capital improvements, there was a hole in the paper, of equipment, of items of equipment as needed to fully carry out the purpose of this motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Would you care to explain it?
Well, the capital plan request this year to the town were $1,718,000, and we narrowed it down to 114. There were several things that we did. There was some, there was a hazardous waste day that was on there for $30,000, and we decided to remove it and work regionally with other towns to see if we can do that. We haven't done that in a long time. Have a hazardous waste day at the transfer station, and that's probably why you see paint cans and things like that along the side of the road. So Rita and I are on a committee to try to regionalize other services, and we thought that would be a good thing if we could work together with some other towns, and maybe we'd only have to chip in 10,000 instead of 30,000. We usually buy two police cruisers every year to keep the fleet in good shape. We decided to only do one. The sidearm mower for the Highway Department was a safety hazard, so we needed to replace that. That's it.
Seeing no one is asking any further questions? Oh, yes, he is. Okay.
Leo DuBois, I see an item in here for four voting machines.
Three.
Three.
Oh, it's three? Well, oh, so it says four here, but you asked for three. What kind of machines are these, and how is it going to improve life at the voting booth?
I think one of those, that's one of those unfunded mandates, but I will let our town clerk speak to that.
The company that we have the voting machines with right now told the different communities in Massachusetts that have those machines that the Federal Elections Commission weren't going to, well, they weren't, they didn't meet the certification. And they're 20-year-old machines, and they don't meet the certification anymore. So we need to get new voting machines because of that. And the ones that we have, they're not making the parts anymore for the voting machines. So if something goes wrong with them, we're not going to be able to, you know, fix them.
What kind of machines? Now, I heard these different things.
That's not the point. The point is that she's telling you that the machines are decertified, and they have to buy new ones, and we don't have to talk about the machines and their parts.
Well, I'm not talking about parts.
Okay, well, what do you want to...
I don't know what kind of machines they have. There's a lot of controversy about electronic voting.
Oh, you want to know what kind of machines?
Yes, and I wonder if it's those, because people, you know, prefer paper ballots. And I was wondering what kind of machines you're going to get.
Yeah, there's only two that are certified by the state of Massachusetts, and they're both paper ballots.
Oh, so there will be paper ballots to count. Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Sorry, I misunderstood you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move to Article 10. It's a two...
Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry?
Need a vote.
I said we're going to move on to Article 10, which is to vote.
Welcome to my world.
Okay. We have to do a two-thirds vote on this, and if I don't get a unanimous thing, I've got to do a count, okay? I'm not trying to tell you how to vote, but... Article 10. All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, raise your cards. Okay, we have to count. Thank you. We're going to do it again. Tellers? The state requires it if we do it, so wait a minute, we're going to vote again. Are you ready, tellers? We don't have to do cafeteria anymore. All in favor of Article 10, please raise your cards. Tellers, please count. Thank you.
Forty-eight.
Thank you. Forty-eight. Going to respectfully request that the people, excuse me, people standing, please find chairs, or I won't have you counted next time. The chair's down here. I'm sorry?
Seventy.
Seventy. Thank you. Seventy-nine. All opposed, please, raise your cards. Tellers, please count.
Zero.
Zero.
Rita?
Zero. Three.
Five.
Five. The vote is 255 to eight. It passes by the two-thirds vote. Article 11.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote that the sum of $10,000 is hereby appropriated to pay costs of purchasing for one copier for the town offices, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectman is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, parentheses 9, of the General Laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Would you care to speak to it?
This is a separate article from the expenditures committee, because originally we didn't know if we were going to lease it or purchase it, and we've decided to purchase it. Our copy machine is seven years old, and it's having really hard time keeping up with the duties of the town. Has to be serviced almost every other week, and the copier that we're going to end up purchasing will have a three-year free maintenance agreement.
Finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. This moves us to a vote. I don't see anybody in the, at the microphones. This is going to require a two-thirds vote, and we're going to count. I'm not going to bother with the rest. Tellers, please stand. All in favor of Article 11, please raise your cards. Tellers, please count.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-three. Fifty-one. Six, I'm sorry, sixty-three. Fifty-one. Sixty-six.
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one? Is that correct? Seventy-one? Thank you. All opposed to Article 11?
Zero.
Two-hundred-and-fifty-one to one. Passes by the necessary two-thirds. Article 12.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,711 for the purchase of leasing, leasing for a term of five years, one new administrative vehicle for the use of the office of the assessors.
Second.
Do I hear a second? Thank you. Would you explain it that this is part of?
I'll try. I must be getting tired. I can't say leasing.
Would you like me to say it?
No, that's okay. I'll do it. This is a vehicle we decided three years ago that it would be more cost-effective to lease a downsized model, so Ford Escort, for the assessor's office instead of a hand-me-down Queen Victoria that was killing us in gas mileage. What is it?
Not a Queen Victoria.
Crown Vic. Crown. I must be getting tired. Okay, a Crown Vic. And it's a, it's a five-year lease, and at the end of the lease, we'll, we can own it for a dollar, and it's a Ford Escort. It's downsized.
Okay.
This is the third year of a five-year lease.
Finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Yes, Mr. Markson?
What was that amount?
$2,711. For the whole year.
For the whole year.
It's a rental.
Where can I get one?
All in, let's move to a vote. It's a majority vote, so we can do this by cards. All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to Article 12, raise your cards. I see no cards. I declare it... Is that a card? Yes, it is. Okay. It's passed by majority vote. Article 13.
Mr. Moderator, I'll do this one.
Complete with sigh.
I move at the town vote to accept on the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 90, Section 34, an apportionment in the amount of $278,560 or take any action relative thereto.
Seconded? Would you explain to the people what that just said?
This is money the state does give us, and they haven't cut us, for improvements on our roads.
Thank you. So it's money in? Money in?
Money in.
Okay. Needless to say, the finance committee approves.
Finance committee definitely approves this.
Okay. Do you have a question about the money?
No.
Oh, okay. I assume that you're approaching the microphone. You need to speak.
Explain the article, but Chuck did it. Thank you.
I'm sorry. You stole your thunder. Okay. Seeing no one in front of the microphone, we'll move to a vote. It's a majority vote. All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, raise your cards. Wave it, please, for opposed. I don't see any. I declare it passed by unanimous vote. Article 14.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to postpone this matter indefinitely.
Seconded?
Second.
We can't withdraw it. This is the way we do it. It's stabilization money. All in favor of postponing indefinitely Article 14, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no cards. It's unanimously postponed indefinitely. Article 15.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to raise and appropriate $50,000 to the reserve fund.
Seconded?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. It says what it says. Do you wish to speak to it?
We'd like to put more in, believe me, because our reserve fund is at a minimum level, but this is the, the minimum out that we could put in and still have a reasonable formula around in there.
Finance committee recommends?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Majority vote. Oh, question, Mr.?
What is the reserve fund for, please?
The reserve fund is basically a fund that, it's like a fallback account that we have for unanticipated expenses.
Answer your question. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote on Article 15. Majority vote. All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, raise your cards. See some opposition. I declare it passed by majority vote. Article 16.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Garvey, Board of Health, I'd like to read you. I move at the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $57,493.90 for the purpose of financing the following water pollution abatement facility projects, repair, replacement, and the upgrade of septic systems pursuant to an agreement with the Board of Health and residential property owners, including without limitation of all costs thereon as defined in Chapter 1 of Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws that protect and financing costs shall be repaid by the property owners in accordance with those agreements, as well as take any other action necessary to carry out these projects.
Do I hear a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Garvey, would you briefly explain?
All this is money that's been lent out to people to repair their septic systems, and it's been repaid. It's like a revolving account. As it comes in, we let it back out again.
Thank you. Finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Seeing no one is moving to the microphone, we'll move it to a majority vote. All in favor of Article 16, raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to Article 16, please raise your cards. I see no cards raised. I declare it passed by unanimous vote. Article 17.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 42G through 42K.
Seconded?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would you please explain what that chapter and verse means?
That is acceptance of the state statute that would allow us to assess betterments and charge Lakeville property owners that are now water customers. That's the money that we're going to use to repay the loan for the water tower. That's the state statute that gives us the permission to charge that extra assessment.
Finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Question, sir?
Does this mean there's going to be an enterprise fund, or does it go directly back into the general funds?
It will, no.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I believe right now it'll go in the, in the regular general fund until we get town meeting approval for an enterprise fund?
Indeed, what Nancy said is it's going to go back for the water tower financing. Shouldn't that monies be kept separate, or have we just not gotten that far in the thinking process? It seems to me that if you are indeed going to collect the money for water, and your intention is to put it back into water infrastructure or payments, et cetera, then it should not go into the general fund. It should be earmarked. Otherwise, I think you're going to get into a situation where you're back to, how do you pay for things?
Okay, I actually thought it was going to go into the water stabilization fund that we set up, but I think the way that it technically has to work is that it goes into the general fund first, then it has to be appropriated at town meeting to go into the water stabilization fund.
So it goes into, goes out of?
Pardon?
Said it goes in and then goes out.
Right.
Yes.
Kim Borg, Baker Lane. It's my understanding that $250,000 needs to be paid back annually on this loan. How much money are we going to make annually from those businesses that we're...
Wait a minute. I think you've jumped the gun on the motion. This motion allows the town to make betterment fees, but it hasn't got to do with the creation of the water tower yet.
Okay.
Okay, so if you're going to ask the question, you've got to kind of mold it to that, okay?
It sounds like you know the businesses that are going to be tied into this.
Yes.
What type of revenue are we going to bring in from those businesses?
Okay, initially... Last year's gallonage. Well, I'm talking about the betterments that for the new businesses tying in, we're looking at a million dollars upfront before we even start to assess this, but we are 880,000 gallons a day, 88,000? Right, a penny a gallon of an increase that will go just to Lakeville, we could be bringing in 303,000. That's before the new businesses tie in. I'm hoping that comes down to like half a cent after the new businesses tie in, especially the residences at the train station. That's 15,000 gallons a day alone. So once that ties in, it might not be the same amount of assessment every year, depending, the more customers that come on, the less it will cost each individual and business. That's what we're looking at.
Does that answer your question? Okay.
It's the next article. We can do it again.
Somewhat as a point of order, Mr. Moderator. All this article does is allows the town to assess betterments.
I understand, but she, what she's saying is, I'm not sure I want to...
It's relevant to this motion.
Excuse me. What she's saying is, I'm not sure I want to have the town assess betterments unless I see that there's some money going to be made, and that's why she made the question that way, and I allowed it, okay? I'm going to move to a vote. Seeing no one at the mics, this is a majority vote. All in favor of Article 17, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to Article 17, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. I declare it passed by majority vote. And now we get to finally Article 18.
Oh, my God. All right. Mr. Moderator, I need a thing. I move that the sum of $4,800,000 is hereby appropriated to pay the cost of constructing an elevated water storage tank and a pump station, and for the payment of all other costs incidental and relative thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectman is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 8, parentheses 4, of the General Laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, that all or any portion of the borrowing authorized by this vote may be issued through the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, and that in regard, in that regard, the selectmen are authorized to enter into a loan agreement and a project regulatory agreement with the trust to evidence this borrowing and that, and to execute and deliver all other documents incidental to such borrowing through the trust, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to assess betterments in accordance with the Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Sections 42 through 42i and 42k, for such percentage of the total cost to the town of this project as a selectman shall determine to be appropriate upon all real property that obtains direct... upon all real property that obtains direct or remote benefit from said storage tank and pump station, whether by the provision of potable water or water for fire protection or otherwise.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would you explain it, Nancy, please?
Um, I think we've explained it all night.
Yes, I understand. And if... Why don't we just...
Okay.
The point is, if you feel that you have further information, or do you wanna wait for questions? Tell me.
Well, we pass out a flyer. It shows, there's a map on the back that shows the proportion. It's vital to our economic growth. Hopefully, it will bring in some increased revenue. And I'll answer any questions, or some of us will. But I think that we've talked about it through the... It's been a whole thread of the whole meeting tonight.
It has been a thread. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Sir?
Dick Scott, Rushpon Road. Nancy, how confident are you that this budget estimate that you put forward is gonna cover the capital costs for the project?
Um, I'm very confident. I've talked to town council, I've talked to Taunton. We still have to write an IMA, intermunicipal agreement, with Taunton. We have an allocation from them of a certain amount of water, but we have one large one that happened when we did the Betty Snack deal, and then we have a lot of little ones. So we need to consolidate all our IMAs and sit down and get in writing assurances from them. But talking to Taunton, as long as they get right now their allotment of what they ever do for the bill, we can add on to that. As long as they get what they charge for their bill, we can add on what we need for our assessments. And once the water tower's up, we can buy water wholesale, so we can do even better than that. So that's why we're kinda in a hurry to get the water tower up, so we can start borrowing water wholesale.
Nancy, how much of this project is based on current known needs and future anticipated needs?
Okay. I think that because we invited the two gentlemen from CDM, who the engineering firm that are helping us through this process, I think that they've sat there through the whole meeting, so I think maybe one of them could answer that question.
I give the floor to whoever wishes to speak. Mr. Leveque, or...
Yeah, my name is Ben Leveque, and I'm with CDM. And just so I remember the question exactly, he wanted to know how we're dealing with current needs versus future needs.
Yep.
Well, we did an evaluation that was partially funded by Lakeville, partially funded by Taunton, that looked at creating what we refer to as the high service area, which is the northern part of Lakeville where most of your commercial current development is. And based on the current system without the tower, we looked at your system pressures and what would happen. Basically, your system pressures are generated by the Taunton Water Treatment Plant. They have pumps that pump water out into the system. When those pumps are pumping, everything is fine, but there are times when those do go down or if they fail, and that puts you at, I guess, a reduced pressure situation, which is unideal for fire protection and for general use. We looked at that scenario, and we also looked forward into, well, what if Lakeville does want to expand or increase their marketability from a commercial standpoint in the northern area? How would that... What would you need in order to do that? And we worked with Rita and the selectmen, and we had basically lists that were generated of potential customers that could come in, as well as, you know, based on, I guess, a likelihood of how realistic the projects were. And based on that, we designed the tower to deal with your current needs, but also you only wanna build... You only wanna go through one of these capital improvements once, so look to have potential expansion to allow for growth within the operability of the tower that you would construct.
Does that answer your question, sir?
I know, and it's past 10 o'clock. All right. I'm not trying to be hard here, but we are not a wealthy town, contrary to what the state may think. And projects like this that are infrastructure lend themselves potentially to phasing, okay? And while I don't wanna get too far off on the thing, I'm just trying to get a ballpark. Is the future part of this 50%, 30%, 20%? And I understand their estimates and guestimates, but it strikes me that, contrary to what CDM just said, that if it's a multimillion dollar project, cash flow analysis and alternative analysis need to be considered in that. And I just wanna be satisfied that I'm not paying the upfront money for this big humongous tower, which quite frankly, in terms of turnover, at one end of the system, you may have stagnation, you may have a lot of issues. So all I'm asking is, am I paying upfront money for a 30% reserve for future or what? So just, you know, just give me a ballpark.
Okay, hold on. Go. Give them the ballpark.
The volume of the storage tank that we estimated is a half a million gallons, so 500,000 gallons a day. When you look at storage in a tank, you need to have fire storage, and that's the dominating volume that you need in order to provide adequate pressure and flow in the event of a fire. Of that 500,000, 300,000 of that represents fire storage. The other 200,000 is allocated for emergency storage and to meet peak demands for your system. This is also tied to a pump station that helps you meet those demands, but I guess 60% is purely just for fire protection, which is now. And then on top of that is your current demands and needs, so that... I don't know if that answers the question.
I'm not sure it does, but...
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, if I may assist in answering that question?
Go ahead.
The cost to the town or the cost to the residents, if that's Mr. Scott's question, is based on last year's gallonage and historically the gallonage of water that's been purchased from the Taunton water system by the existing customers in Lakeville, that would, by adding a penny per gallon to those people or those companies and residents, that would generate over $300,000 a year. Now, the note for this 4.8 million with the grant money that we're already locked into is $250,000 a year. We don't have a problem. Plus on top of that, we can add betterments to the new tie-ins as well.
Okay. Sir?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that you mentioned about the houses at the town, the station, rather, that are being built right now. Are they hooked up to water? Are they tying into the water? And everyone that's tying in now, so whoever's tied in, and then when you get the water tower, are those same people that are tied into the system at that point, are they gonna pay for the betterments of the pump station and all that?
Question. Answer?
The construction of the residents at the train station, there's already in excess of a million dollars coming into the town as a result of that in fees, over and above everything else that's going on. They're not part of the past gallonage history. They're only... They will be in addition to that. So there will be fees charged to them. There will also be betterment fees charged to them. There's also a 56-unit apartment building that's being built across the street from LaBarren Hills Country Club that is an elderly apartment complex. They're not part of that calculated historical gallonage either. They will be in addition to it. There's some large contracts or development going on that isn't in the history, but is there to be seen in the future that you can touch and feel, and we can count on those monies.
In other words, betterments and...
Betterments and fees.
And that answers...
Yeah, that answers my question, 'cause I just thought that the existing things wouldn't...
No.
How that would work. All right, that answers it.
Yes, sir.
My name's Nelson Pratt. I just wondered if you could clarify for me the term betterment. Well, my understanding of a betterment is if this water line passes in front of my property, I'm assessed a dollar amount whether or not I use it. I thought I heard earlier tonight that that wouldn't be the case in this particular project, that only the people that tie in would be assessed, either a tie-in or a betterment fee, I think is what it was referred to earlier in the evening. Is there a betterment fee that will be assessed to every property owner that this water line passes in front of, or only if they tie into it?
Yes, sir.
I guess I'll keep going. The provisions of Article 17 allow the selectmen to assess betterment fees for anybody that directly or indirectly benefits from the water lines. So yes, that's a possibility. However, there will be public hearings in the future when we start discussing and having our hearings on the betterment fees.
Just as a point of clarification, in many communities, water sewer lines pass in front of properties but are not utilized by the property owner, but the town determines that there's a betterment to that property, even though it may not be utilized by that owner, that it could be used in the future by another owner of that property. So they assess a betterment fee. And I'm wondering if your game plan is to do that with this water line or not?
We don't have a game plan that far ahead yet.
But you're saying that there will be hearings on it?
Yes, there will be hearings. And I think that would be a more appropriate time, Mr. Moderator, to discuss that.
Well, he wants to know if he wants to vote for it, because if it goes by his house, he wants to know if he has to pay for what he's not using.
Well, it doesn't go by my house particularly, but...
No, I mean, it could.
The last line on here says...
Not yet.
The increase plus betterment fees, it winds up by saying there's no cost to the taxpayer. And in actuality, there very well could be cost to all the taxpayers that this line passes in front of.
That's right, because if a water line does pass in front of your home or your business, even though you may not be connected to it, you have the benefit of it in fire protection. And then you'll also have a benefit of it as far as your insurance premiums would be.
That's the point of my point. You didn't make that clear. I'm glad I asked the question, 'cause that wasn't explained.
Sorry about that.
Sir?
Joseph Batacola. Who's gonna maintain all this? Are we gonna have to maintain this all?
Anyone wanna answer that?
City of Taunton.
City of Taunton's gonna maintain the tower?
Yes, they are.
Now, who decided to put that tower at the town barn?
The tower's not at the town barn.
Where's it gonna be?
The tower will be up behind the transfer station across the street from Talbot's.
Oh, I thought you said it was gonna be at...
There's a pumping station.
Pumping station?
Pumping station, sir.
Now, is that... Will this hurt anything with the... Because of the salt being there and the problem with the gas?
No, it's a closed... It's all closed system.
Yep.
It's a closed system.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Eric Mattson, Old Powderhouse Road. When do we expect this project to start and complete?
Start?
A rough timeline.
Yeah, I'm asking. Nancy?
Um, we have to have our design completed and ready to go by August 1st to entitle us to the American Recovery Act money, the stimulus money, so to speak. So we need to... Actually, tomorrow, after... If it does pass tonight, I have to send that in, because our approval from town meeting for those funds to be available has to be in by June 30th. So the sooner you get it in, the better. And we went to a training last Friday about how it works, and the sooner you get it in, even if it's not a perfect application, the sooner you get it in, the sooner it moves forward. And like I explained before, if we don't get there on time, somebody else gets that money they've set aside for us. So if we get there on time and somebody else doesn't get in, we could get even more money.
When do you think it will end? When do you think it will be up and running?
Um, I would defer to... One year? One year.
Thank you. That was the other half of his question. You have a further question?
Yeah, I do. I'm sorry, it's a couple parts. My next question is, and how many people in one year, how many people do we anticipate to be hooking up to this system to be supplying their water?
How many people out, like the residences at the train station?
What's the projection, overall number, please? Do we know?
How many units? 204 units, but there are 196 ready to go right now.
That's the 56 that we have.
Plus 56 at LaBarren. So I think that LaBarren is 110 gallons a bedroom a day.
I'm sorry, Nancy, maybe I wasn't clear.
Okay.
Please, the speaker. How many people entirely in the town of Lakeville will be hooking up to this water supply system? And the projection?
They're already on it. The ones that are hooking up will be the business. I mean, we're doing this for our commercial and business growth mostly, but the people are already on it. They just... The fire protection's not really right... Is not there right now.
I understand. So we're building a tower based on the inadequacies of Taunton's pumping system to supply as adequate pressure and quality. Is this correct?
No, we're doing it for ourselves, number one. Number two, we need to correct the problem of the contaminated water at the town office building. We cannot do that now. And to connect national development, if and when it should ever come, we need to provide them with water for the business will add to our tax base and the residences at the train station also. So in the end, when the tower's up and everybody's getting their water, we have the ability from Taunton that we can buy the entire system for a dollar. All the piping and stuff is relatively new, so then we eventually would own it. So we will eventually own the water tower. I think we'll probably still contract with Taunton for the maintenance, because I don't think that... That's... We still have a long way to go.
Sure. I understand. And that's... Thank you for your answers. And also, my last question, have we already discussed the buying of wholesale water with Taunton?
Yes, we have. Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just one last question, and I'll sit back down. We're gonna pass this with a preliminary design, I presume. Does it... Does the design that we're putting forward have to be approved by the state as a condition of funding? And what I was leading up to is, do we have any flexibility as you go through this process of optimizing it as you're formulating your game plan? Right now, we're asking for a chunk of money based on some scope of work. As Chuck referred to, we're gonna be putting together, quote, "a water game plan." If we were to come up with some modification that we think we need, are we going to have the flexibility in design? Or are we gonna be locked into this design subject to the state approval?
First question was state approval, I think.
We're working with the state. The state has been pushing us our deep... The Department of Environmental Protection has been pushing us in this direction for a long time, because they're worried about the inadequate fire protection in Lakeville. That's why they've mandated that we cannot have any more hookups until we, in fact, take care of the problem. Which is one question. What's...
The state's a member of the team.
Yeah, the state is a member of the team.
Yes.
Louise Richard, Lakeside Ave. I'm just curious about something. I have a friend who's moving into the apartments. They're moving in as of July 1st, so they're gonna have to have water. If the water's already there, what's the incentive for them to purchase the water from us? I mean, how are you gonna do the switch over? Where's the water coming from right now? 'Cause you're gonna have people in there as of July 1st, my understanding.
Right, and their water bill will come from Taunton. What we're working for is in the future, their water bill will come from Lakeville.
It's the same water.
Same water.
So they're just gonna transfer it to you?
Yeah.
Well, that we could... Well, initially, this is like a... This is not gonna happen overnight. We'll put up the tower, then we can master meter. And we have town wells. My thought for the future of Lakeville is if we use... We have a town well that pumps 500,000 gallons a day. That's a half a million gallons a day, which is more than we're getting from Taunton. Eventually, this system has been designed so that eventually, if we wanna use our own town well, we can use our own water. We don't even have to depend on Taunton at all. We could use our own water and get all the money. We don't have to master meter.
Yeah, but I'm gonna stop you, Nancy, because you've gone way too far.
Yes, I am.
All she wanted to know was, on July 1, why would they switch water? And the answer is, they're not gonna switch water, it's just who's gonna bill them.
It's just who's gonna bill them.
Right.
Taunton is willing to give you the money, us the money.
Well, it's gonna be our system. That's the way I understand it.
And not July 1 either. I mean, the water tower has to be up and running, and we have to get things in line. And that costs money. That's why we're keeping the money in the Water Infrastructure Fund.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator.
Who said that?
I did.
Yes.
We have a long night ahead of us. I move the question.
I don't think you have to. I don't see anybody else standing up.
Okay, we're going to move to a vote, and it's a two-thirds vote, which means the counters must count. All in favor of Article 18? Please raise your cards. Thank you. Fifty-eight. Thank you, you may put your cards down. All opposed to Article 18? Please raise your cards.
One.
Thank you.
Two.
Thank you.
Three.
Needs a two-thirds vote. The vote is two hundred and twenty-one in favor, nine opposed. I declare it passed by two-thirds. Article nineteen.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to elect, as provided in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 80, Section 13, that all assessments made under General Laws, Chapter 80, shall bear interest at a rate of five percent per annum.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Motion's been made in second. Would you briefly describe why you want that motion?
Yeah, this is so if the betterment is enacted by the Board of Selectmen, that someone could opt to pay it over a twenty-year period, and we could charge a five... Up to a five percent interest rate for that money.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions? I see no one moving to the mic, so we'll move to a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no cards. I declare it passed by unanimous vote. Article twenty.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 80, Section 13B, providing for the deferral of payment of betterment assessments for owners eligible for exemption under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I didn't hear it. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, okay, the motion's been made in seconded. Will you explain, please?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. This gives the town the ability, or the selectman, or the treasurer, I should say, the ability to defer the betterment cost for elderly and low income to a later date.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
I see no one at the microphones, and we'll move to a vote. It's a majority vote. All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. Wave them vigorously. I see no vigorously waved cards. I declare it passed by unanimous vote. Twenty-one. Twenty-one, article.
I'm getting ready. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote that the sum of thirty million, one hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars is hereby appropriated for the purpose of financing the construction of a sewer project for the shorefront communities on the western side of Long Pond, including, without limitations, all costs thereof, as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29C of the General Laws, as most recently amended by State 1998, Chapter 78. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow twenty-eight million, five hundred forty thousand dollars and issue bonds or notes therefore, under Chapter 44 of the General Laws and/or Chapter 29 of the General Laws, as most recently amended by Statute 1998, Chapter 78, that such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town unless the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, determines that they should be issued as limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues, as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29C, as most recently amended by Statute 1998, Chapter 78, in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project.
It's like reading a foreign language, isn't it?
Worse.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Would you care to briefly speak about all of that?
I would move that... I mean, I would recommend that we don't approve this. This was for a sewer project for the western side of Long Pond that we were on the state revolving list for. We have no way to pay it back, so I would not recommend approval. It keeps us on the list so that we don't have to do the thousand pages of paperwork to get back on the list, should ever there be some funding available to do this project.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
No, it doesn't.
No, no.
It does not recommend approval. Force of habit, I'm beginning to feel like a robot up here.
They disapprove. All right, we'll move to a vote. These two-thirds, we're going to do this by, I hope, not counting. All in favor, please raise your cards.
No.
I heard everyone say, "No." Does anyone want this?
No.
No. Everyone... Anyone who wishes to vote against it, please raise your cards. Thank you. It is unanimously rejected.
Oh, dear.
Article twenty-two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey a perpetual conservation restriction encumbering a portion of a parcel of land, said parcel located at Howland Road, Lakeville, and described in a deed recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 18180, page 228, and identified on Assessors' Map 9, Block 2, Lot 5C. And said portion to be encumbered, being known as Conservation Parcel and Access Easement to Conservation Parcel, on a plan titled Conservation Plan of Land at Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, prepared by Prime Engineering. A copy of said plan is on file with the town clerk to the Massachusetts Autobahn Society, Inc., or other entity qualified to hold a conservation restriction on such terms and conditions and for such consideration, which may be nominal conservation, on such terms and conditions and for such consideration, which may be nominal consideration, as the Board of Selectmen deems appropriate.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There has been made a second. Chuck, do you want to talk about the turtles?
This is so the turtles have a place to go. If you recall, about three years ago, we... When we were trying to come to a compromise on the relocation of Route 79 and the natural heritage map that includes a portion of that relocation, we had to designate some land elsewhere in town. The easiest way to do it was to use town-owned land, which this is. And it's at a very remote parcel off of Howland Road. In a back corner of that parcel, and it abuts other land that's protected by natural heritage.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Okay. We'll move to a vote. It's a majority vote. All in favor of Article 22, raise your cards.
Question.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's a question about the turtles. You weren't quick.
Norman Arle, this entire parcel is gonna have the conservation restriction on it?
Yes, it is.
And is there reason such a large acreage is having a restriction put on it versus the amount that Route 79 was going to take? In other words, this was a potential revenue source at one time, if not currently, it's industrial zoned, industrial B, I believe, or at least it was. Are we taking away our ability to develop this land, and does it need to be the entire amount?
Oh, it's not... It's not the whole six hundred and some odd acres. Oh, no, it's a very, very... If you look at the map that was handed out, it's a very small...
Thirteen acres, okay.
Thirteen acres.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three acres, I'm sorry.
Twenty-three acres.
Okay. And how is that figure calculated?
Well, you need to replicate, as you do with conservation land. If you take so much, you have to replicate or recreate twice or some number that they deem necessary.
Okay, so it's based on what was taken for the other project?
That's correct.
At some one and a half or two.
Yes.
I think Nancy has something to add.
And we were fortunate, before I turn it over to Nancy, we were fortunate enough, in the relocation of Route 79, the town of Lakeville actually acquired land from Lakeville Hospital to also assist in that. So there... We gave up some land, we gave up a conservation restriction, but we actually did acquire a little bit more land on Route 79, the relocated Route 79.
And Nancy has one thing to add.
And for us doing that, we received fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. All right. Move? Mr. Turner.
Hi, Richard Turner from Vaughan Street. I'm a longtime employee, I think most of you know, of the Division of Fish and Wildlife. I don't know exactly where this parcel is, but rather than Mass. Autobahn, I would much rather see it under the protection of the Division of Fish and Wildlife. As you know, Natural Heritage is now a branch of us, of our department, and we do own quite a lot of land. We have just recently acquired, in the past few years, quite a bit of land that would be adjacent to the Freetown State Forest property. So if this property is in that general vicinity, I would like to have you consider the... You know, them being, holding the CR, if indeed they're willing. I just... I'm just totally unaware of this whole project. Just wanted you to know.
Any reply from the selectmen?
Actually, we asked them, Mr. Turner, and we couldn't get them to accept the CR. So actually, our last... We had asked Wildlife Trust, Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, and finally, Autobahn agreed to accept the conservation restriction.
No one at the mics. We'll move to a vote. It's a majority vote. Article twenty-two. All in favor, show your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please show your cards. I see no opposition. I declare it passed by unanimous vote. Article twenty-three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant a temporary, non-exclusive easement to Stephen R. Coet and Catherine M. Coet in, upon, along, and under a portion of the discontinued way known as Old Main Street, Route 105, as shown on a plan on file with the town clerk, for the purpose of assessing, maintaining, and repairing the existing residential well located within said way, on such terms and conditions as for such consideration, which may be nominal consideration, and for such duration as the selectmen deem appropriate.
Do I hear a second? Motion's been made in seconded. Would you explain it briefly?
Yes, the Coet family, apparently their well is two feet into the town way, and it was an aridated... I'm not sure when, but it's been quite a few years now. And we want to allow them to continue using the well as long as they don't put a new one in that place, they can use this piece to keep water coming to their house.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
And just for clarification, it is just a temporary easement.
Thank you. It's going to require a two-thirds vote. We'll try it. All in favor, signify by raising your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no raised cards. I declare Article 23 passed unanimously. Article 24.
I move that the town vote to rescind the vote on Article 17 of the annual town meeting of June 27, 1991, which accepted the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 42A, in its entirety, and instead vote to accept Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 42, 43, and 44.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Chief, would you briefly explain?
Mr. Moderator?
Are you going to do it?
Sure.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah. What this is, is the town of Lakeville currently, the fire chief is what we call a weak chief, nothing personal, Dan. And the police chief's a strong chief. And what we're trying to do is have both chiefs strong chief. You probably remember when Doug Mills was our only firefighter. Now Dan's got quite a few men working under him, men and women, and we just want to make sure that he has the tools necessary to do his job.
Thank you. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. It's a majority vote. All in favor of Article 24, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no opposition. I declare Article 24 passed unanimously. Article 25.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaw by adding a new section regarding public consumption of marijuana. And I'm an engineer, so if I spell or mispronounce this, tetrahydrocannabinol, as follows.
Okay. I don't think... I don't think we have to go into all of the reading, okay?
Thank you.
Anybody object? I don't hear an objection. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is made in seconded. Would you care to explain it, please?
As far as I... What I understand this motion, or this article to be, is it allows the police department the ability to fine, I think it's up to three hundred dollars, for an offense of an individual that's observed on a public way, park, bridge, stairs, what have you, consuming marijuana or that other drug. Most towns in the area are approving this. It's just something that's come up as a result of the vote last spring or last year regarding the removing that marijuana is a fine or a bad drug. I'm not a good product of the '60s, so I can't help you with that.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Anybody have a question? Seeing you're making a question.
Well...
Yes, Leo.
Isn't the consumption of marijuana already legal anyway... Illegal anyway, and the police can arrest you for that?
But it's something that if you're caught with an open container of alcohol, there is a fine that's associated with that. There is no fine associated if you're consuming the marijuana. Maybe... Could I defer to the chief? Maybe he can help us out a little bit with this.
See, I think we have enough laws about this stuff already.
No, this is not that. Go ahead.
Through you, Ms. Moderator?
Yes.
Mark Sorrell, the chief of Lakeville. Basically, with the decriminalization of marijuana, anybody holding an ounce... Under an ounce cannot be arrested, subject to an arrest. They are subject to a hundred-dollar fine that goes to the town. But there's no bite in the way the legislature designed the act. So decriminalization, basically, you got a hundred-dollar fine, but someone... That same hundred-dollar fine, if someone was smoking in front of you, smoking a marijuana cigarette, per se, in front of you, it would still be a hundred dollars. The bylaw gives us the ability to actually criminally charge under 4121D, I believe it is, and actually write a ticket for a three hundred... Three hundred dollars. The way it is right now, we charge them a hundred dollars, and there's really nothing there to make them pay. So it's decriminalized, yes, it's illegal, but it's decriminalized, it's not arrestable.
Well, I think if the legislature saw fit to do that, I don't see why we should have towns running around and doing otherwise. If you're unhappy with that law and you want the old one reinstated, well, okay, work to do that. I'm not in favor of... We already have had like a forty-year war on drugs, it's a disaster. It's not much different than the war we had on alcohol. It's not much different than the war we had on alcohol. And all it does is create all this criminal activity, and it was the same thing that was caused by prohibition. And I think we ought to just leave it the way it is, and I would not vote for this.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
This, if I may inquire of Chief Sorrell, there's already a law on the books that you're not allowed to smoke or consume tobacco products on school grounds. Is this law enforced?
I believe that law doesn't have any bite, you're not supposed to consume tobacco on the, the school grounds, but there is no charge for it.
Well, that's something to look forward to.
Dry where it lives. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think the point that was missing here, wasn't it that the advantage is that so, let's say kids get caught, they wouldn't have a criminal record. Isn't that the main reason for that?
I believe that is part of it, yes. What this bylaw would do is, for example, the skateboard park, kids could sit there and smoke marijuana cigarettes, or take the THC. They could do that right in public, it's going to be the $100 fine, and there's no deterrent to stop them from doing it right in front of us. It's the same decriminalization, which they don't even have to pay it, because there's no bite in the law to make you pay it. So this gives a bite to say, at least don't, don't smoke it in front of us for $300, and it gives us a right to go for application.
So they pay the fine, but you don't arrest them?
Don't arrest them, no.
It's a $300 ticket instead of a $100 ticket?
No, it's actually $300 ticket for smoking in front of us, then $100 for possession.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Goodfall?
Yes?
In Massachusetts, currently, if you get arrested, that, that stigma is on you forever. You can't fly an airplane, you can't get a lot of jobs, and so forth, over something because they smoked a little marijuana. Now, I'm not approve of using that, I've seen people buzzed out on mush heads from it, but if you want to do that yourself, have a ball. But to give a kid an arrest record for life, he can't.
No, it's not an arrest record, it's a ticket.
Yeah, but he gets arrested.
He can't get arrested.
Can't get arrested.
It's a ticket.
You can't get arrested. It's a ticket. That's why it's decriminalized for anyone holding under an ounce of marijuana.
All right. Well, this criminalizes it, correct?
No.
No?
It just ups the fine.
It gives us the right to be able to file in court. Right now, we, we can't really file in court to have them pay the $100. This gives us, so they're not going to be blatant in front of us, and actually gives us the ability to write a citation and go down to court and actually file charges on the violation of the bylaw.
Is this that much of a scourge on us, town here, that, you know, half the kids are smoking marijuana in front of the police? To me, you know, I just can't see it. That's ridiculous. We got so many laws, we don't even know what ones, we're probably breaking one now. And I think we should just not.
Yeah, you think that's too much time.
Okay, next, next.
Now, I'm just going to address this gentleman, Mr. Moderator.
Wait a minute, before you do, it's his turn.
I'll be brief. Chief, do you think that $300 fine is sufficient to allow you to do your job properly?
Actually, I believe that's the maximum that we could charge anyway.
Sir?
I'd say if it can bring extra revenue, and to answer this gentleman's question, I mean, it might be just a joiner, or a little bit, but if it was your daughter who that guy ran into and killed, you might look at it a little differently. Smoke as much as you want, but if it allows the police force to bring revenue to the town and help it out, I think we pass this one very easily.
Moving to a vote. All in favor of Article 25, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to Article 25, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. The article passes by majority vote. Article 26.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 6.6.2.1, to prohibit electronic message signs by adding new language as follows. The new text is underlined in the existing bylaw, it reads 6.6.2.1 signs, comma, including electronic message signs that display lighted messages that are capable of changing at intermittent levels.
Intervals. Okay. Second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Mr. Merritt, would you care to comment on it?
Mr. Moderator, it was just a feeling of the planning board at the time, considering the information that we, or was gathered by the master plan committee, where the town was looking for maintaining the rural character, we just didn't feel that electronic message signs would be appropriate to be located around town. You know, really, the issue I think here is just in some of the information we got back from the hearing, that the best thing we could do is put it up to the people on town meeting floor and let them choose and decide.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Care to speak to it? Mr. McQueen, you are first, then Mr. Marksen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I guess, I guess I have a problem with this. I, I was thinking about it, and I, I mean, a sign that, having a sign, I was thinking, I'm thinking it was the one in front of the, what do they call it, the storage facility, and it's just a lighted sign, and it can be changed, and isn't that a good thing? You don't have to go out there, and I think, I think we're going overboard here. I can understand a sign that flashes and tries to attract attention, that would be obnoxious, but a sign, like the one in front of Savis that says, it's not flashing, it says, you know, what's on sale? It seems to me that saves money. And I think this is going overboard. I think electronic signs are the wave of the future, and we shouldn't be banning them.
Thank you. Mr. Marksen.
Isn't there a sign in front of this building? How long has that sign been there in this rural town? And we still have the rural character of the town. Another aspect of my objection to this article is the fact that when I walked in here, I was electioneered by a notice that says that if the $1.7 million override passes, the average real estate assessment of $346,000, which is way less than I have to pay, because I happen to have some land, some of which has an electronic sign in front of it. But, you know, a businessman, and we're trying to get our tax revenues increased, and in order to do this, we've got to bring businesses into town. Let the businessman make a dollar, and then he'll move into town, he'll run a business here. But if you, if you don't let a businessman make some money, how's he going to make money? He's going to have to publicize the products or the services that he offers, and he's going to have to do this in a way that people can see. Now, if I have to advertise in a newspaper, a half-page ad, it costs me 500 bucks in the Middlebury Gazette for a week. So multiply that by 52 weeks, you see what the cost is, and you see how much more effective the sign is. And furthermore, the sign is seen by the people driving past the business owner's property. Those are exactly the people that you want to get the message to. Now, there's another sign in town, and I don't want to identify the merchant.
It's all right, we're going to hear him shortly.
That's not the one I'm talking about. I'm talking about a non-electronic sign in front of a business, that it's a fine business, and I patronize the business myself, but it's a ramshackle sign, it hasn't been maintained, and it looks like, like, it looks like, it doesn't look very nice.
Yeah, leave it at that.
Yeah. And I think an electronic sign would be, would it be an improvement? You know, I happen to think that the sign that I have is a tasteful sign, and Mr. Savis' sign is a tasteful sign. I don't think they, they denigrate the atmosphere of the town. And I think that this, this bylaw is unnecessary. I think it's harmful to the interests of the town and encouraging business, and I think we ought to defeat this article.
Thank you, Mr. Marksen. Mr. Savis?
Steve Savis. Well, a combination marketing tool, communication device, and ideally a pleasing art form, signage is considered speech, and in the United States is legally protected as such under the First, the Fifteenth, the Fifth, and the Fourteenth Amendment. Under the Fifth Amendment, case decisions supporting the constitutionality of zoning laws are good, but they do not give municipalities carte blanche powers to substantially destroy economically viable use of property through the exercise of their powers via land use regulations, and these do include sign ordinances. So to completely outlaw this type of modern technology is at the very least an assault against the success of small business in our town, and once again, pushing the burden of taxes onto the individual homeowner. A couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting regarding this, and I asked the planning board why. About three minutes later, they said that the reason they were doing this was because the signs infringe on nighttime darkness levels. Well, I have 100, 533 signatures here from registered voters in Lakeville who would agree that these signs do not pose such a problem. I vote that it should pass.
It should not pass.
Should not, should not pass.
Yes, sir.
All right. I thought Lakeville wanted to be a, still a rural town, but from the gentlemen that I've heard speak so far, they like Las Vegas and Times Square. I'm totally against electronic signs, personally. I mean, to me, that ruins the rural character of Lakeville.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Darrell Burney, Lakeville Parks Commission. We've had the opportunity from the Savis family to utilize that sign. We're an enterprise fund, and it helps us get the word out, that such as opening or closing Clear Pond or anything at the camp. And I look forward to continuing, as well as the board, to use the availability of not only Mr. Savis' sign, but also Mr. Marksen's.
Please send me your messages.
Yes. The signs are fine, it gets to be the size, okay? And if this does not get passed, is there any restriction to the size? If you go down towards Wareham on Route 6, you'll find some signs that are four-by-eight size, feet, with bright lights. I mean, actually, blind, you're going through there, there's about half a dozen of them. And the signs are fine, what you have in front of Savis and in front of Bill Marksen, they're small, you know, they don't go flashing, they're not really bright, bright signs, and they get a message across. But if you allow a sign without any restriction or sizes, then you're leaving yourself into an area that's going to look like, as he said, Vegas, or if you go down on Route 6 and 28 to Wareham, okay, it really is kind of ugly and destructive looking. So I think the signs are fine if you regulate the wattage, if you regulate the size, and regulate the time and flashing of what you have. But if you don't have regulation on it, I think you're going to walk away with a whole bunch of problems.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt.
Mr. Moderator, the existing signs would be grandfathered through the bylaw, and the planning board actually has no problem. We think that they're presently tasteful. I think the concern that we have is that they're become a Vegas-type mentality where abutting businesses now have to outdo their neighbors and put larger and brighter signs. There are a number of communities in southeastern Massachusetts who have moved forward to prohibit them, and the reason is exactly that, just because that, you know, there is this competition level between businesses where signs are getting larger and brighter, and are causing problems.
Mr. Marksen.
Mr. Moderator, may I point out to the public that my sign is the maximum size that you can have a sign of such a kind in Lakeville?
Thank you.
I couldn't have made it any bigger.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator? He was before you, so. Mr. Savis?
Rocky Savis here, Savis Liquors. I keep hearing the word rural character. Have you been down to the train station lately? If Lakeville is rural now, what was it 30, 40 years ago? These signs are not in any way offensive. They're created for the small businessmen, which we are, it has helped us to survive. You have another article here, Article 30, which is going to create additional business areas and residential areas. They need this type of technology to survive. It's modern, it's needed, and will continue to help the small businessman, otherwise he can't survive in this area.
Thank you. Mr. Maxey?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the size of a sign in our town bylaw, Section 6634. Unless permitted elsewhere in this bylaw, no sign may exceed 32 square feet in area, period. Just clarification.
Before I call on anyone else, please remember, I don't need to hear what you have to say twice. If it's something new, I'd be glad to hear it. Sir?
Hi, Ben Nicholas from Applewood Shore. Just wanted to point out to everybody that the bylaw, as it's currently stated, says that there are no flashing signs or any signs that incorporate traveling or animated lights. So some of the worry about becoming a Vegas-like area should kind of be laid by the current bylaw.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McQueen?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. I have no more comments on this. I want to make a motion to recess after you take a vote.
Recess where?
Recess this meeting. We've been here four and a half hours, there's some important things to consider, and...
I don't think you're going to get it.
Okay, well...
But we'll do it.
I'm just...
You're going to have to make a motion to adjourn to tomorrow. That's what you're going to have to move to do.
Oh, we can't, we can't recess to some future date?
No, that's what it is.
That's what it is, adjournment?
Yes, you adjourn to a future time.
Well, let the people decide whether they want to stay or not. I mean, some people want to go home.
Well, I mean, it's debatable, but yeah. Further comment? This requires a two-thirds to...
You didn't get a second? Point of order?
Yeah, I did, but I'll try it again.
You didn't get a second?
Second? Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
I thought we did that, but, okay.
We did.
It's been a long time. We need a two-thirds vote, and I'm going to need the tellers to count. Okay?
Yeah, that's what I meant to do.
All in favor of Article 26, please raise your cards. All, please put your cards down. Now, all opposed to this article, please raise your cards. Thank you. Article 26 fails. Mr. Moderator? Yes, Mr. McQueen? I move adjourn. To 7:00 PM on Tuesday. To 7:00 PM on Tuesday. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. It's debatable, but I don't think it makes a point, we'll just simply vote. All in favor of adjourning until tomorrow at 7:00 o'clock, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All in favor of continuing, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Article 27.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 2.0, definitions, by deleting the definition of dwelling, single-family with attached apartment. And if I can waive the reading of...
You may waive the reading unless anyone objects. I hear no objection. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Would you care to speak to it, Mr. Merritt?
And, Mr. Moderator, moving forward with the implementation of the master plan, the planning board in conjunction with the master plan implementation committee, and the building inspector has looked at establishing what the building inspector would consider an enforceable zoning bylaw for allowing accessory apartments within the community. This is the first step of that. Next two articles address it as well.
Thank you. Finance Committee have a recommendation? Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak to it? Did the planning board have a recommendation on this?
The planning board held a hearing and we recommended to approve bylaw.
Thank you. Seeing no one else coming before the microphone, this is going to take a two-thirds vote because it is what it is. So we're going to need the tellers to count. All in favor of Article 27, please raise your cards. Tellers, count. Thank you. Forty-three.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, thank you. All opposed to Article 27, please raise your cards. Anybody see cards?
Two right here in the front.
Two?
Two.
Thank you.
One.
Two. Two, one, and...
One, two.
Oh. I'm sorry, I only got three, so tell me again. One...
Two.
Two. One, two. Hundred and fifty-five to six, so it does pass by the necessary two-thirds. Article 27 passes. Article 28.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Section 4.1 as listed, if I can waive reading.
No, okay. Would you explain it? Is there a second?
Second. Can you explain it? Article 28 just establishes a point within the use bylaw that classifies where accessories apartments can be.
And that is?
In residential, in business, and in industrial B.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Did the planning board have a hearing on this?
Planning board held a hearing and voted unanimously to approve.
Thank you. Further comment? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This is also a two-thirds. We're going to count again because if we have one against it, the Attorney General says you didn't count. So, all in favor of Article 28, please raise your cards. Thank you.
Fifty-one.
Fifty?
Fifty.
Fifty-one?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one and fifty. Thank you. Put your cards down. All opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you.
Zero.
Thank you.
Two.
Thank you.
Two.
Two, thank you. Hundred and seventy-one to two, I declare it has passed by the necessary two-thirds. Article 29.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the current zoning bylaw by adding the following, Section 7.8 accessory apartment, and I ask please to waive the reading of the entire article.
I don't think anybody would object. Seconded, thank you. Speak to it, please.
Mr. Moderator, this is basically the meat of the bylaw. There was a lot of discussion between the planning board, the building commissioner, and the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and this is consensus on what we feel is would work best for the town as an accessory apartment.
Planning Board have a meeting?
Held a hearing and voted unanimously to approve.
Thank you. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
No one's rushing to the mic. It's going to require two-thirds vote and we must count. All in favor, please raise your cards for Article 29. Thank you.
Three, four.
Fifty-one.
Thank you.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, thank you. You may put your cards down. All opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you.
Two.
Thank you.
Three.
Three and zero. The vote is 164 to five. I declare it passed by the necessary two-thirds. Article 30.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the current zoning bylaw by adding the following new section, 7.9, neighborhood business overlay district as follows. May I waive the reading again?
You may waive the reading as long as you explain it, okay? Do I have a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Merritt, explain, please.
Again, the creation of the neighborhood business zone is a shot from the master plan and through the Master Plan Implementation Committee, though the current, I mean, though the existing law that we're voting on tonight is a little bit different than what may have been proposed in the master plan, it is felt by all the committees who worked on it, something very appropriate to establish new economic development within the community without impacting the neighborhoods. What we're looking at is a very low-impact use of residential structures in a boutique style. The types of permitted uses are shown under 7.9.2. We looked at those uses and debated them as far as what would be very low-impact. We established intensity regulations which conform to some of our current zoning bylaws, and we've limited it to the working hours or hours of operation. And the biggest thing, I guess, is that no matter what happens within any district, it would be established as a neighborhood business overlay district, is that would be required to have a special permit granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals, which means that then, before it was approved, notices would go out to abutters and there would be a public hearing.
Does the, did the planning board have a hearing?
We held a hearing and we voted unanimously to approve.
Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Yes, it was just a question, I raised it at the time, it says purpose and intent, all right? And if you go through this here, there's no restrictions on what kind of building. It says, it says, in the same area, but the question comes down is that if they're houses, okay, this basically allows them to come in and tear one down and put something else up, all right? There's no restrictions on business in a residential area, okay? So we're looking at putting businesses into a residential area, and what you have is no restrictions, even though there's a lot of intent, but it doesn't give you any restrictions to the property or the building or ripping one down and putting some up. I mean, they said that it was going to be in it, but I don't see in this plan that says that, you know, what restrictions you have. I mean, it says intent, but, you know, without some restrictions, you can basically put anything in there, and I'm just questioning that.
Okay. Mr. Merritt, do you have an answer to him?
Under Section 7.9.2, it explicitly states permitted uses. Under 7.9.3, it suggests or requires the special permit requirements. Under 7.9.4, it outlines the exact intensity regulations. I don't know how much more we could have regulated it or been specific.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I was also on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and one of the things we stress in this, that the aesthetics of the neighborhood remains the same. And in this bylaw, 791, it does state that the neighborhood business overlay district will permit personal services, retail office establishments, which conduct all business operations within an enclosed facility and do not present any adverse impact on appearance, peace, or value of adjacent residential properties. Designs shall be in keeping with those existing and shall be enhanced with landscaping, et cetera. So it does hit that, and the ZBA will be the ones enforcing that.
Yes, ma'am.
Marilyn Fickett, Hills Avenue. It was said at the Wednesday night meeting last week at the library that this overlay would only be considered on the corner and include the old library and the flower shop and one or two houses after that, and it would stop right there. I see nothing in this plan that says it will stop there.
I think that's a different article.
Yes, you're correct.
It's a different article that they were discussing. I think it's Article 31, actually, 33, that was addressing the thing...
Does this article allow for businesses to set up between houses if you live in that area? A garage could set up beside our house?
Mr. Merritt, could you answer her question?
They get a permit?
No, this is similar to the establishment of any district that we would have, residential, commercial, industrial. You establish the district and you list the restrictions that go with it first. Secondly, you establish the parameters or the parcels within which the district overlays, which is the second part of the article. This would not have any impact at all on Hills Avenue.
In other words, this is the law, and then on Article 33 or so, it's going to be what area is covered by that law? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Not law, but bylaw. Article 31.
It would seem to me, from what I understand here, that a business, a small business, could go in between any of the houses on 105.
No, it's, what it does is it permits a certain kind of neighborhood business overlay district, and then you have to have a separate bylaw that indicates where that district shall be, and that's the one that you had the reply to last Wednesday night.
But if you have that overlaid as a business district, you don't need the other part to tell you what kind of businesses. It's already an overlay business district, right?
Mr. Merritt, I'm not sure I understand it.
There's some beautiful historic houses on Main Street that are in the registry that Mr. Reynolds has shown, and it doesn't seem to me that it would be a good idea to put houses up and down 105. I mean, businesses in between the houses.
This article doesn't have a district in mind. It just is making the rules for what a district would be should we make a place for it. Is that correct, Mr. Merritt?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, that's correct.
So this doesn't say anything about where the overlay district would be?
It has, it's further down in another article.
The next, the next article.
So this just lays the groundwork to put the businesses in there.
Yes, but that we haven't said where yet. It's on the next article. Or the article after that, I'm not sure.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
It is on page 15. There's a map that shows exactly where the subsequent article is intends for that district to go.
Yes, but we haven't got that far yet. We're just calling what the district is.
I agree with that.
Okay. We'll bring that one up when the time comes. Yes?
Mr. Moderator, Dave Pierseki?
Yes, Mr. Pierseki.
I'm in the area of this business zone. Is this going to be owner-occupied? Is there going to be a residence in the business?
We're not talking on that article yet.
No, I think it's appropriate, Mr., it's, we were looking for owner-occupied residences.
Right.
What we did want to have is somebody who would go in and develop residences into businesses that were not occupied.
And so would be, like Darlene's.
Well, it doesn't say where yet. We have to get there, and then you can say, is it Darlene's?
No, we're not talking about where. We're just saying...
We're just talking about defining it.
Purpose and intent.
Right.
So it's going to be residence, it's going to be a residence as well as a business. That's what I'm asking.
Is that correct, Mr. Merritt?
Yes.
He doesn't have to live there.
Mr. Benaski?
The question I have is intent. It doesn't say that you have to live in the business. They're saying that, yes, we want that, and my whole process before is that everybody has nice intent, but you're not stating what your intent is because you're not saying that you have to reside in the business. You can have a house that's completely vacant except for a business in a residential area. And all I'm saying is if, which way you're doing. If your intent is that you have to occupy that dwelling with the business, then say so, and you don't have that.
Mr. Merritt?
Mr. Moderator, in the first section, the statement is made that all permitted uses shall acquire a special permit issued to the business owner and shall not be transferable to any subsequent owner. I suppose you could take from that 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 doesn't necessarily mean that the person lives in the home, but they do have to own the structure.
Mr. Markson?
As I read the article, it does not require that someone reside at the premises.
No, I don't see that either. Anything further? Nancy?
I guess for the record, I just have to say that I'm not in favor of this article. There are a few reasons why. In the master plan, when the survey went out to the people, the number one thing that everyone said was maintain our rural character. We've gone through a lot of trouble to put our business all over on one side of town in order to protect that rural character. In other bylaw, there's another thing in other bylaws, under users permitted by special permit. In our other bylaws, it usually says anything not listed here is prohibited, and that isn't Is it in the main part?
Yes, right. Anything that's not in this, right.
Anything that's not listed here is prohibited, okay? Well, I feel better about that. The bank and financial institutions, when I had gone to some of the planning board meetings, I know that the lots in some of this section are small, but as the future goes on in other places, Ton Street was another street that was slated for this neighborhood business. And if a bank or financial institution goes there, who says they're not going to have a drive-up window in a neighborhood where there are people residing in a drive-up business? The cars come through and the lights are going to be flashing in people's houses. I just think there's much too much leeway on what's here, and I think that it hasn't been looked, we're making a lot of changes in Lakeville. I think we ought to concentrate on the business we need to get in here to get the real money rather than the neighborhood business, which is going to take an area of town, and I worry about enforcement. We're not really famous in Lakeville for enforcement. I mean, I would hope that would change, but I don't want to look at that area 20 years from now and have it be all business because it's a beautiful area of town where we have the old library, we have the townhouse, we have the church. That's a beautiful area of town, and I personally would like to see it stay like that.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Moderator. Cynthia Bissell, 235 Main Street, Lakeville. I've been following the neighborhood business plan since it came to my attention in May of 2008. I think Mr. Ifradye has done a wonderful job bringing this forward to keep the area that is chosen on that map as a rural area, to keep the homes looking like homes, the businesses there, such as Mrs. Donley has. I think most of us would agree that she's done a beautiful job with the property. She's kept it looking like a home, and it's had a very small impact to the area, especially being that there is a school there, the properties on 18 as well, that run business, conduct business now, such as the Groomingdales. It's ideal for that area. We don't want to become an industrial business area. We don't want to become a small, little strip mall. This neighborhood business plan, if I understand it correctly, keeps the homes there and the This neighborhood business plan, if I understand it correctly, keeps the homes there and the structures there looking as they are with the zoning board overseeing what type of business goes in there. They have the final word on what goes in there. And I think we should let them do that, let them do their jobs where that's concerned, and give the people that are wanting to have small in-home businesses like this the opportunity to do so, but keeping our community in that area especially looking like it does now.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, Celia Briggs, Free Town Street. And I just wanted to interject that I live on a street where there are businesses, a bank and Baby G Farms. And I think there are a lot of issues this doesn't address, such as lighting and enforcement of noise violations and that type of a thing. How are you going to regulate lighting, parking lot lighting, that type of a thing? If you're into residence, do you really want a parking lot light shining in your window during the evening when you're trying to sleep? And businesses sometimes do generate noises, and there has to be bylaws in place before this is passed to ensure that the noise violations can be enforced. You say you want to enjoy the peace of your residence. I know that when Baby G Farm goes down during a power outage, all you hear is the generator noise. That's a business that runs 24/7, and I just want other town people to be aware that once their business is in place, it's going to be hard to enforce the peace that you may lose.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Norm Norrell, as a member of the master plan committee that got this started several years ago, many years ago, it's actually starting to be, the intent was, in fact, to add to the rural character. And if you go to the most rural town in this country, you'll see a downtown district. You'll see some small businesses, local businesses, run by local residents, many times living at those residences. So the idea really was to bring in a center of town, to start there. This area, it's hard to tell where the center of town of Lakeville is, but starting in this area as a center of town to give the opportunity to see some of that small-scale business so that we can get away from the strip malls and the big box and provide that more rural business. So I would actually promote that. It is in kind with rural, and I think the limitations that are put on this are with that intent.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Moderator, do we have a quorum? Yes, we do. Moving to a vote. This needs two-thirds vote. Tellers, please count. All in favor of Article 30, please raise your cards.
19.
All opposed, please, please put your cards down. All opposed, please raise your cards.
11.
Thank you.
45.
I'm sorry?
25.
Thank you.
57.
Thank you. Eighty to eighty. Eighty to eighty. Yeah. The vote is eighty-four, eighty against. It has to pass by two-thirds. It does not. This article fails. Article 31.
Mr. Moderator, I guess it would be appropriate to withdraw Article 31-
No, but you can postpone it indefinitely. Postpone it indefinitely. That's how we kill things.
I'll make a motion to postpone it indefinitely.
Thank you. Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no opposition. It is postponed indefinitely. Article 33.
Thirty-two?
I mean, thirty-two. I'm trying to get there.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the current zoning bylaw, Section 7.5.3, by deleting subsection four. And if I can waive the reading of that and replace in a new subsection for, to include limited occupancy housing, which the planning board determines as part of site plan review, is designed for adult-targeted households described as limited to a minimum of two bedrooms, including a first-floor master bedroom, to reflects an attractive building design and architectural features customarily found in adult-targeted households, which design shall be approved by a design review committee comprised of members of the planning board. Three, provides for any recreational amenities to be oriented toward an adult population and not include playgrounds or play furniture. Property owners of limited occupancy housing units through a viable association shall be obligated for the development, operation, and maintenance of a common wastewater disposal system, stormwater systems, internal vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems, and landscape maintenance. The limited occupancy housing shall provide a minimum of one parking space per dwelling unit.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Motion is made and seconded. The planning board has had a hearing. And the results.
Planning Board held a hearing and approved unanimously to approve the zoning article in front of the town meeting.
Thank you. Would you explain it briefly, please?
The purpose of the article is to lift the age restriction associated with the development of the residential portion of the Lakeville Hospital property. We felt that this would be a big boom to the town to aid in a beginning of construction on the site, which would further move the commercial side of things and hopefully, you know, do other parts as well as getting the old existing hospital torn down. And it felt, we felt it actually gave us better control over the development that would go in that community because it gives us the ability to review the construction documents, give some say as far as architectural elements, and really places, you know, the burden on no more than a two-bedroom unit as opposed to whatever else could have been had by just having an age restriction.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. McQueeney?
Yes, I guess what I'm wondering is why we have to remove the age-qualified housing? Why do we have to replace it? Why can't we add to it? That's one question. The other, the other thought I have is that, and I'm speaking, thinking schools here. You know, we've already got three new students coming in from the, already, before they're even open, the new apartments at the train station. And we should make every efforts to, every effort to, to keep old people like me coming into the town who don't have children because it costs an enormous amount of money to educate each child. So I'd like to answer to the first question is why we have to eliminate age-qualified housing? Why can't we just add limited occupation, occupancy housing?
Mr. Merritt, could you answer his question?
Age-restriction housing within at least Massachusetts is a little bit of a misnomer, only in the fact that it doesn't really establish what a lot of people thought it would. By adding age restriction, most developers felt that what we could actually do is get towns to approve, feeling that there would be no involvement in the schools by bringing school-aged children in. The reality of it is, is that most affordable housing, or not affordable housing, but age-restricted housing, which is, which is developed in any community, actually does just the opposite because what it does is it moves the senior population out of their four-bedroom homes and moves them back into a community structure where it then makes their own homes eligible for families who do have school-aged children. And it's been proven in most communities that as you add more age-restricted housing, the population of your schools actually increases for those reasons I just mentioned.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
There's a lot of problems with removing the senior age restriction. The first one was already spoken about, and that's the impact of the number of children. Right now, in our current economic environment, we have a surplus of housing everywhere, both age-restricted and non-age-restricted. At the same time, we don't, in Lakeville, have that many options for seniors to stay in town. As Jim mentioned, if somebody wants to downsize, they're likely to move out of town. So you're going to lose that house, and then the three- or four-bedroom house is going to be filled. So unless we provide some senior housing in town, we're going to not derive any kind of benefit. So it seems to me the emphasis on this project should not be more housing, but the emphasis on this project should be what we've all been trying for since 2002, and that's to get the business going. With regard to the financing, it seems to me that no bank is going to approve any projects with or without age unless there's a viable chance of selling the houses. And my understanding is these two-bedroom houses are currently being focused for 325,000 to 375,000. Right now, three-bedroom and four-bedroom houses are selling for less than that. So I think it's very important that we not lose sight of the fact that we need to provide housing for seniors. We need to also make sure that any development project that we have going through has a affordable housing component or will never get out from under the threat of a 40B. This project was designed to be retail, commercial, two-thirds, one-third, residential. And we're just going in the wrong direction, and it's at a very bad budget time to be bringing this kind of idea up. In addition, we have had the property sit there with the old Lakeville Hospital as an attractive nuisance. The dump still hasn't been cleaned up. It seems to me that we need to get that site prepped. It is the prime development property in Lakeville for the serious business revenue that Nancy's talking about. And I just cannot believe personally that removing this age restriction is good for Lakeville.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Dick Anderson, Rush Pond Road. In essence, the reason this thing is coming back to you now is because national development missed the curve. The curve was that as much as five to 10 years ago, there was a high demand for age-restricted 55 and over. That curve was missed by national development. So they are sitting there with, in their mind, an inability to bring that property and have them sold. So they're coming back to the town now for this request, and I received this handout tonight. It says there will be, the project will provide building permit fees. We're going to get that no matter what goes into that property. The real estate taxes, they say, is a, is a, an asset. It's going to be offset by kids moving into the systems. Thank you, sir, for bringing that attention. And again, as Mr. Scott has said, the landfill is still there. We are assisting a developer for having missed the curve. Now they say we'll come down and we'll put in these two-bedroom semi-adult targeted concept. Well, if you read the Brockner Enterprise, it's the same thing as being offered with the same words by a developer in Easton. He missed the curve, so they're kind to come in with this stuff. I don't see this as an attraction for the town of Lakeville. Supposedly, you know, upwards of 100 or 200 kids to the school system, it doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Mr. Scott?
Mr. Moderator, it also strikes me that if we make this change for national development, any other senior housing project in town will right on the heels come in and say, okay, we're interested in removing the senior housing on our project also. I just think that we're setting a bad precedence of spending a lot of time negotiating agreements with our developers and then having the agreements whittled away bit by bit. I think it's important to hold the ground on this. The original project called for 20 cottages and a senior housing, a senior housing building, which was going to be quote-unquote condo-type units. I think that kind of density where you had 20 cottages nestled in around the wetlands with the walking trails and the sidewalks for the residential portion of it was an attraction, you know, for the neighborhood. The butters on Rush Pond Road, and there's 23 of us, we signed a petition raising our objection early on to this proposal and submitted it to the planning board. And we had 21 of 23. And I think, I think the butters there were very happy with the original proposal, 20 cottages. We were also happy with the fact that, that there was going to be an attraction for the neighborhood. And going under the current proposal is 74 units crowded on 25 acres. And I just feel that this is not the way to go. And I'm especially against lifting the age restriction.
Thank you. Seeing no-
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Merritt?
Yeah?
A couple of issues. One is I'm disappointed that they didn't read the article that they wanted to change from. And I'll read it to you right now, where it says, "At the commencement of occupancy, at least one occupant who is at least 55 years of age." That means when they first occupied the building now, that you have to have one occupant over 55. Now, we all didn't fall off of turnip trucks yesterday. That means tomorrow they can sell it to anybody they want to. All you need is a straw buyer, and it's 55 years old. They buy it, they sell it to whoever they want to sell it to. If they're successful at building a three-, four-bedroom home, then guess who's going to buy it? This gives the planning board much more oversight by changing that. Sure, they're losing that initial buyer of 55, but they're putting in so many other restrictions that they can make it unattractive to families. And Mr. Scott mentioned that somebody could go buy a three- or four-family home for less money than what these homes will be marketed for. That's absolutely correct. So why would they, why would a family move there with children? They can buy something with a yard for less money elsewhere in town that's already constructed. I think that's very important to consider, that the planning board gets much more power and oversight and control with this bylaw change than what is there now.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Aaron Burke, Fawn Street. I actually disagree with that. If, if one of the problems is getting financing, there's more control if the bylaw stays the way it is because they can't finance the project. I think what needs to happen here is, we have to look at this as an opportunity, again, for revenue. Lakeville needs money. I don't think that this project with the tax revenue is going to sustain itself. I think that this is an opportunity, if we vote no, for the planning board to go back and negotiate with the national development, for them to try to mitigate some of these costs that we're talking about. If there's going to be an impact to the schools, national development should address that with mitigation, with money. I just think that this is, it's, I mean, nobody thought the economic downturn was going to be as bad as it is, but that's where we're at. So it's, it's an opportunity for the town to try to not finance national development, not subsidize national development because they've decided they want to do residential instead of pursuing the development that they said they were going to develop that would have helped us, the Target and the Stop &amp; Shop.
Thank you. One moment, please.
Mr. Moderator, the selectman comment that they made about the original agreement that you had for this to be a senior thing, you mean to tell me that they could, isn't a senior agreement that you can't sell it to somebody else that's not senior? Shouldn't that been the way that you agreed to make that arrangement? Shouldn't that been the way that you agreed to make that arrangement?
That's not the way the current bylaw is written. The current bylaw only means the initial purchaser must have at least one occupant that's 55 or over.
So this is a bylaw that the town agreed to?
Yes.
That doesn't sound like a good way to do...
Well, now we have a chance, and I applaud the planning board, we have a chance to fix that.
Well, I would make it that it has to be, you know, it has to be a senior place, even if somebody does sell it. That would be the way to go, not to take the restriction off.
Thank you, sir. Nancy?
I guess my problem with National Development all along is that we worked really hard to set it up one way, and we were expecting the commercial and the business to come first. And kind of as an afterthought, we gave in to the residential. It's going to be built in phases, is my understanding. And the one thing that kind of makes me afraid is I don't want to see another unfinished project at Lakeville Hospital. If these units are going to go in, if we are going to go in, and they don't sell, and they do phases, instead of doing them all at once, they do a Phase 1, and they don't sell because the economy's bad, now we still have the hospital up, we still have the dump, and now we're going to have a half-finished residential project. That's my fear. And then that property's never going to be anything. It's just getting worse instead of getting better.
Mr. Merritt?
I believe what will happen is actually the property will always remain as it is if we can't take a step forward and help National begin any part of the project. There was always an element to the project that was residentially based. It was there, it was on the same parcel, and there was never any restrictions other than the age requirement which was attached to it. In other words, there was nothing that said that they couldn't move forward with putting 200 units on that space. I think now we actually have the ability to look at and manage the growth. And to answer your comment, I guess, Nancy, I don't see why the planning board, even through the building inspector, couldn't require that the dump be cleaned before any permits be issued or the project move forward.
Mr. Scott's in the waiting. You just had a chance.
With all due respect to the planning board chairman, I don't ever recall any discussion with regard to there being more than 100 units on the property. National has gone down, in our recent discussions regarding this bylaw change, down to 74. But even 74 nestled into 25 acres is approximately three units per acre. And that's not what we talked about when we approved the zoning originally for the project. And Chuck, with all due respect, even if your reading of that article is as you've determined, the intent at those zoning meetings was always that it was going to be age-restricted housing. And if it was a language issue, as you've described, I want to go back to those original meetings, it said it was the intent. I would like to put forward an amendment to this that I think would address many of the issues that have been discussed here, okay? And it's not that different from what the planning board has put forward, but it does put in some clarifications that have been discussed, like the age restriction, the densities, et cetera. And I think if we're going to go forward with it, I think we should have these kinds of language in it. So I'd like to read it as a proposed amendment, which I put into writing, sir, and let the chips fall where they may. May I proceed?
You have.
The floor? Okay, thank you. I propose the Article 32 be amended as follows. Item 4, "The residential portion of the mixed-use development district shall consist of no more than 74 units of aged qualified housing. The 74 units shall consist of 20 semi-detached cottages and 54 units of residential condominium units located in a single senior housing building. The location of the building shall be in accordance with figures 2.1 and 2.2 of the Environmental Impact Report dated 3/25/2004 on a maximum of 25 acres. The aged qualified housing will contain at least one occupant who is at least 55 years old or over. In addition, 15% of the unit shall be affordable housing." And I'll explain that later.
I'm going to stop you right now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is an extensive, complete change from what the warrant article says, and I'm going to ask Town Council to act on it by making a comment of what you're doing. Town Council?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. From the portion that I heard read, it does seem that this proposed amendment will be outside the scope of the original warrant article. And for clarification of what that means, the idea with the warrant is that it provides voters notice of what will be voted on the night before. In particular, with zoning bylaws, there's also a requirement that the planning board have an opportunity to have a public hearing, discuss, and act on anything that is going to be proposed. While certain amendments that are within the scope of what was originally read in the notice, the warrant, the proposed amendment, which may be meritorious and may be something that will ultimately be considered at a later date, goes well beyond what the original notice to the voters provided. And there may be people at home who would have wanted to be here to discuss the proposed amendment. So my recommendation to the moderator is that the proposed amendment is outside the scope.
Okay, thank you. I think what she's saying between the lines is if people endorse what, where you're going, then they would have to act on this in a negative way to go back to do that, okay? But I'm not going to tell you how to vote, so... No, I mean that. I see no, Mr. Marks? Okay.
Perhaps Mr. Scott would be mollified if I were to suggest to him that when I was 55 years old, I had a six-year-old and an eight-year-old. On the one hand, I would have been eligible for senior qualified housing. On the other hand, I would not have wanted to live with the six-year-old and the eight-year-old in a two-bedroom apartment in a complex that had no playground facilities. So I think that, at least to my way of thinking, that what is suggested by the article is less desirable to that type of family than what is presently in place. And therefore, I would suggest that the article addresses, successfully addresses, the issue to which it is addressed.
Thank you. Let's move to a vote. It's a two-thirds vote, counters have to count. Yes, we have a quorum. But it's diminishing, so please don't leave because we only have a couple left. Article 32, all in favor of Article 32, please raise your cards. I'm sorry?
Fourteen.
Thank you.
Twenty.
Thank you. Please put your cards down. All opposed to Article 32, please raise your cards. Thank you.
Eighteen.
Thank you.
Forty-five.
Thank you.
Forty-one.
Thank you. The vote is 44 in favor, 114 against. It needed two-thirds, and it didn't even pass by majority. So Article 32 is defeated. Article 33.
Article 33. My name's Wallace McCarrill. I'm one of the petitioners. I moved at the town vote to amend the official zoning map by rezoning from residential R to B business land on County Street as described as follows.
Okay, and I'm not going to have you read all the meats and bounds, but it is referred to in a map, is it not?
It is. And if we can use the old phrase, a pitch is worth a thousand words, we had some colored maps that we sent out. In addition, on the back of the votes that the town handed out is also a map. You'd like me to explain, sir?
I would in a minute. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Yes, you may.
Okay. Really what started this is a lot of what's been discussed tonight on all the other articles as far as zoning goes. We live across the street from public storage area, and basically, up until that was built, we lived in a rural character. We basically came to the town after that was approved and it was built and basically said, "Well, I guess the cat's out of the bag. The rural character's gone. Other people will probably speak and tell different stories that they have. I'm not going to speak their stories." What we did was we basically went to the town leaders, and they led us through a process. We went to the zoning master committee, and what basically I understand was concluded there was the residential zoning that was in the master plan really didn't fit. From there, we were sent to, back to the selectmen. We reported what had happened to the selectmen, and from there, we ended up at the planning board. And at the planning board, basically, what you'll see is myself and my neighbor, neighbors' the Dorities, brought forth what really is Article 34. We wanted to rezone our property. You'll notice that across the street from our property and down the street to Freetown Street and towards Taunton, a little by Highland Road, the other side of the street from where we live, and it was that way when we bought the property, was zoned business. And we basically zoned residential across the street, somewhat of a dilemma. So what basically we did is put together a petition, got enough signatures, we didn't go for the 200 so that we'd have a special town meeting, and we were able to basically have it put on the agenda tonight. I think that you will have different people speak because we went to the town boards, and we basically got recommendations from the town boards, and I hope that they will speak on Article 33.
Thank you. Before I continue, as I understand it, Article 33 includes your property and the Doherty property, as well as other properties next to them, the Van LaHovens and so on. So it's essentially rezoning the area roughly from beyond the church to the bottom of Freetown Street. And then when we get to Article 34, it's on yours and Mr. Doherty's property alone. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So 33 is the bigger rezoning piece.
Right. And 33, the bigger zoning piece, was with what basically we were able to get the different committees that we went to to buy into and approve. If you look forward to Article 34, you'll notice that they don't have, we don't have that approval. I don't understand why, but they decide, they're the elected officials, and they have approved Article 33, and that's what's on the table at the moment.
That's correct. Does the planning board have a recommendation?
The planning board did, as it was required, hold a hearing, and we did approve at town meeting for the town vote favorably for Article 33.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommended approval of this article.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Yes, sir.
I'd like to speak to it. The gentleman, I'm sorry, I forgot his name.
Mr. McCarrill.
Mr. McCarrill, thank you. He mentioned that he bought a piece of property that he didn't know across the street was zoned business.
I think he said it was zoned business when he bought it.
Yes, when he bought.
And he knew that.
I think when we get to the next session, that whole section of that town, I don't think we need more business there. There's a piece of property that I think someone may speak to who lives across the street from that property, who we worked very hard to defeat. This is not an area that we need zoning in for business. School buses have to go through there. It's back to the rural character. I think we need to leave it where it's at.
Okay.
And that's what I'd like to say on that one.
You're against it, okay. Sir?
Barry Evans, Freetown Street. I've been on Freetown Street since 1986, and this battle's been going since the day I moved in. And it's kind of funny right now. Some of the property owners that are trying to get this rezoned were some of the bigots, people fighting the development before. And some of the things they had brought up back then was the devaluation of their property and the neighbor's property, the traffic, the lights at night, all the things that we've heard about, all these other zones. And so I'm, we've kept that, the business that's there, there. There was a time, one time, when it was brought up that if those businesses had ever been sold, they'd have to revert back. Well, the neighbors, everybody in the area, voted no, you know, "You're there, you bought your property like that, but let's keep the rest of the neighborhood the way it is." And that's what I, that's how I'm going to vote tonight. I don't want to see that area developed like the other end of town. It's already developed, we know what it'll look like. I don't want to see that over there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, you're next, and then this gentleman here.
Hi, Cynthia Bissell, 235 Main Street. I see, I've also followed this particular plan. I met these residents when we went, they were advised to go neighborhood business zone. And again, these are, these are residents that are in the same position that we are in on Main Street. Their hands are tied because of the zoning that's across the street from them. It's neighborhood, it's a, I'm sorry, business zone. And they're residential, and because of that, they have gotten them, that has gotten them in the position of not being on the same playing field, per se. This is what we're trying to prevent right on Main Street when we were talking about neighborhood business zone. You want it to stay rural, and we're going to end up with people that have their hands tied and have no other option but to go business zone because one of the time, little parcels start going, small sections start going business zone because they're not left with any other options. I can understand and feel what these persons are going through, and I'd be kind of curious on where Mrs. Yates had, had an opinion about the neighborhood business zone and not appealing to her in that sense on Main Street and the backside of 18 on what your feelings are on this and what kind of predicament these residents are in.
Briefly?
Okay, very briefly. On Main Street, we were talking about neighborhood business, and we were talking about a center of town and where things would change in that central part of town that's really beautiful right now. Actually, I feel on this one that since there's such a large area already going down Freetown Street and around, there's quite a few properties there that can all be developed as business already on one side of the street. It's not like you're changing something that wasn't there into something else. It's like it's already there, and this would be adding to the other side of the street. So these people didn't have the choice, and that's quite a large area. If you look at the map, you can see all that business property and all those little lots could be business. So you could have one side of the street that would be all business, and it's already there. All they're asking is to be included in that area. They're not making a new area or making a new bylaw.
Oh, may I respond to that?
All right, briefly.
And I agree with the fact that they're trying to make an even playing field, and if that's what I'm understanding that you're saying. And we're trying to prevent that from happening in our area by putting an overlay, owner-occupied residence, that keeps the rural feel, so we don't have a situation where someone comes in and puts business zone. It would have stopped that.
Thank you. Sir?
Robert Doherty, 153 County Street. I'm one of the petitioners. We moved to Lakeville 25 years ago because of the rural character, and we knew that there was zoned business across the street, directly across the street from the public Our side of the street on the master plan has been zoned for business. The whole neighborhood has completely changed from the rural atmosphere. We have a golf simulator business that serves an alcoholic beverages right down the street from us. We never thought we'd ever see that. We have a bank there. So the character has changed. It's not going to go back. You only have to look north, up Route 18, to see what's happened to the other towns. It's impacted the value of our property. We just want to have the option to be able to do something else. I have a potential five house lots there. Maybe people would rather have it house lots and residence. And there's approximately 75 acres there. If it was developed as residential, probably 35 or 40 homes could go in, they each with two or three children. Now, that's the option in the long run. So it's not an easy choice for the voters. I can understand fully why people don't want to see it zoned to business, but it will be across the street. You'll have it all, all, everything that you have that's allowed, as I said, Midas Muffler, Sullivan Tire, Auto Zone, anything could go in there.
Before I go on, Mr. Merritt, is that true? Mr. Merritt, is that true?
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. I'm half asleep.
If I didn't have to talk a lot, I'd be joining you. He indicated that across the street from the property that they're talking about rezoning, a Midas Muffler, a Auto Zone, all those businesses.
Anything that could be allowed in the business zone could go in those properties. That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure that that was true. Sir, you're next, and then he is. Because you were standing in back of him before he got up.
All right. Thanks, Joe. One point, Ms. Yates. I think residential rates and tax rates are the same, and you're concerned about the beautify of downtown Lakeville and keeping the character. I think my end of town, I think it's a beautiful area of town, too. I'd like to preserve that. And you made a quote that offended me. I mean, we pay the same rates. We've got to preserve the whole town, not just the part that you enjoy or certain people enjoy, the whole town. And I'm looking at back lots here, this gray line or this green line, how far do these properties go back? It may be just, and Mr. Merritt can ask this, I mean, we've got these green things, but this gentleman just said he can put 40 houses in there. All of a sudden, there's a Home Depot. How far do these properties go back?
Okay. Mr. Baneski, I want to get to you, but answer just that simple question, just how far back do they go?
Basically, I got it. Our properties basically go back about 1,500 feet. However, you'll notice that the shaded area only goes back 430 feet. So in other words, we're not asking to zone all of our properties because basically through the process that we went through, we were basically told that would be a fat chance that that would happen. So basically, what you're looking at is all we've done is we've footprinted the same footprint that's been approved for the other side of the street since the late 1970s. So I think also during our discussions and our brainstorming, we had discussions on big boxes and things like that. And I think it was concluded that on the footprint that we have there, you couldn't fit a big box. So basically, what you're looking at, if it's approved, the same type of development could happen on the same footprint on our property as already is permitted to happen across the street.
Thank you. Mr. Baneski.
That was sort of my question. Will he answer the question I have? You said you're going back 430 feet, okay? On Main Street, the business area is only 200 feet. But the question I have is that land behind her now is residential, okay? And the question I got is, what's their intent? I mean, you're going to leave it empty? I mean, how are you going to get back there? If this is all business zone and you put development in that front section, all the property in back, are you going to access that some way, or what's going to happen to it? Are you going to back a little bit later on and say, "Oh, we want to make the rest of it business because we can't do anything with it"? So, I mean, you're covering a part of the land, but the larger area, which has to be many acres, is sitting there like for what? To build houses on later? I mean, what's the usage? What's your intent?
Bill, can he answer that question?
Well, oh, certainly.
Bill could probably answer it. Bill.
No, I don't want Bill to answer.
Until that last meeting, it was my understanding that it would be residential. And therefore, if you wanted to sacrifice some of your right-of-way and not develop it as business, you could go through the planning board process of putting a road out back and developing out back. I would ask maybe the planning board to basically clarify exactly what could happen to the properties out back. They know better than I.
Are you listening, Mr. Merritt?
I'll get you.
Okay. I'm sorry. It's dragging on.
It's okay. Jim's tired. No, the planning board doesn't allow you to access residential land across business land. Period. So that land in back there, Joe, no, it wouldn't be able to be used unless they could access it from somebody down the street around the corner off of Highland or somewhere else. But no, you're not allowed to cross business.
That was the whole thing. The light is part of property, it's unusable.
That's right.
Well, maybe that's okay.
Maybe that's a good thing.
Maybe that's okay for some people. I mean, it's good for the planning board. We don't want more houses in town in, you know, in that respect.
Mr. Marks, you know, we're starting to beat the same dead horse here, so let's continue. Not you, Mr. Marks, but we would like to tidy this up. I think most people have their ideas in mind about how to vote on it. Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, Mr. McCarrill has always been a gentleman, and I want to see, you know, I'd like to see him succeed in what he wants to do, but, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, for my interest, it doesn't make any difference to me. I hold no paper on this. I do want to say that, you know, people are saying, "Well, I could, you know, I could put in a Sullivan Tire, or this, that, or the other thing." You know, nobody was interested in buying any of this business-owned property that they owned, and that's the reason that I developed a self-storage facility, which, by the way, is Lakeville Self-Storage. It's not Public Storage, which is another company. Lakeville Self-Storage is a locally-owned business.
Okay, you said it five times. You made your money.
And locally operated. But the reason that the business is there is because it's the only business that was interested in going in. I owned a piece of property. I could find nobody interested in buying it, and I developed it myself into the only thing that I could. So if anybody's concerned that Sullivan Tire is coming in, or a Home Depot is coming in, or Dunkin' Donuts coming in, I guarantee Dunkin' Donuts is not coming in.
Okay. Thank you. Sir?
Carla Vorsy, County Road. I just want to say that I hope the article is defeated for the simple logic that if one side can be business, then throw the whole towel in and turn it into 44 in Rainham. Doesn't it make sense that you'd turn County Road into 44 Rainham just because one side is already business? So hopefully, we'll preserve the town and defeat the article.
Something new?
Yes. Very key word that was said, intent. How can you invoke, someone said, "I don't have the intent"? You're going to change your community on someone's intentions or not intentions? Intent is wide open.
Okay. Seeing no further, Mr.?
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. I couldn't lay off the hook that easy.
It's not me that's on the hook. It's all them.
I'll be really, really brief. I never would have thought I would have heard myself saying this, but I do support this article. I've been in my house since the mid-'80s. My wife and I have lived there almost a quarter of a century. During that time, I've either led or helped lead the charge on three rezoning articles, and we tried with all of our heart and might to not limit the rights of people that were already doing business there, but to stop any further business from happening because it was a beautiful, beautiful residential neighborhood. You get to a point where the scale tips, and it's not going to tip back. And it's going to go slowly. It's not going to happen fast, but there is enough of a solid business base happening now that it will continue to convert itself. And what this really is about is a lot of the people that fought hard to not let it even get to this point are really just asking for the right to also have options as well. The town said to them, "No, you can't limit these other people." It would seem wrong to me somehow for the town to say, "Yes, but we can limit you." And it's as much about equity as anything else, and most of the people that I've talked to don't have any intention of going anywhere. I know I don't. I've got a beautiful piece of property. I like it the way it is. But it's about somewhere down the road, when the scale keeps tipping, and it's tipped so far that it really, really is purely business, to have that option as well. That is all.
Thank you. We'll move to a vote. This needs a two-thirds vote to pass. Tellers are going to count. All in favor of Article 33, please raise your cards. Tellers, please count.
Four.
Ten.
Fifteen.
Thank you. Put your cards down, please. All opposed to Article 33, please raise your cards.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-one.
The vote is 39 in favor, 112 against. So this article, number 33, is defeated. Last article, no, I mean, next to last article, Article 34, which is essentially the same article, but only on two pieces of property. Is that correct?
That's correct. And just to make it formal, my name's Wallace McCarrill, and I make a motion that the town vote to amend the official zoning map by rezoning from our residential to be business land on County Street as described as follows. I think the reading of that's going to be waived.
Yes, and we can consult the map as well.
It's the lower map as it's already.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Does the Planning Board have a, does the Planning Board have a hearing?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. We held a hearing, and we voted to disapprove the article.
The article has been disapproved. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee does not recommend this approval.
Thank you. I see no one going to the microphone because I think it's all been said. We'll move to a vote. This is a two-thirds vote, and we still need a counted vote. All in favor, please raise your cards.
Three.
One.
One.
Three.
Thank you. Please put your cards down. All opposed, please raise your cards.
Twenty-five.
Thirty-two.
Twenty-seven.
Forty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, thank you.
Forty-one.
Forty-one. The vote is eight in favor, 125 opposed. Motion, Article 34 is defeated. We go to the last article.
Mr. Moderator. Thank you all for staying. We really appreciate it to get this done tonight. Article 35. I moved at the town vote to accept Anderson Way as a town way as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the selectmen to acquire by gift an easement or fee simple in the way in any related easements as shown on the road layout plan drawn by Azor Land Science, Inc., on file with the Town Clerk entitled Dallas Bill Plan of Anderson Way in Lakeville, Mass., dated April 23, 2009, or take any action related thereto.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it briefly? Or do you want the Director of Streets to speak to it?
Planning Board.
The Planning Board? Fine.
Brian, do you want to speak to it?
Because Jim's not up. Okay. Yeah.